Roll call, please.
President Byrne, Trustee Cook.
Here.
Trustee Brown.
Here.
Trustee Schultz.
Here.
Trustee Markwart.
Here.
Trustee Takaoka. Trustee Oppenheim.
Here.
We have a quorum. I need a motion to appoint a president pro tem.
Mr. Clerk, at this time, I'd like to appoint or to suggest for appointment, Trustee Cook to be the president pro tem for the remainder of this meeting.
So we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion, a second. Roll call, please.
President Byrne, Trustee Cook.
Aye.
Trustee Brown.
Aye.
Trustee Schultz.
Aye.
Trustee Markwart.
Aye.
Trustee Takaoka. Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye. A motion carries. So we have a quorum.
Congratulations and good luck.
Thank you.
We're all counting on you.
Yeah, thanks. Could we all please stand to the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right. First item is citizens wishing to address the board, and I know we have some people.
Hi there. Good evening. Thanks so much for hearing from us. I am Kathy Knapp, and I have been a resident of Vernon Hills for 28 years. I actually went to Stevenson, so that way you don't know how old I am. And I have been the president of the Carriages for a number of years with some interim help from another board member, which was fantastic. But the reason I'm here tonight is because I want to request that the village board would put in writing their strong opposition to putting the Lake County Water Reservoir in Carriage Green Park. I know that you haven't gotten an official recent update from Dave and company of what's been going on recently. I did send an email. If anybody got a chance to look at that this afternoon before the meeting, I know Dave's are always really busy, and I'm sure he'll give you an update. You may also remember this from over two years ago when this came up and was discussed. But just to give you a real brief and for anybody who's listening and watching, Lake County needs more water storage, and so they want to put somewhere a 100-foot concrete water reservoir. And 100 feet is, think about that, 33 yards on a football field. That's gigantic. So back in 2018, they wanted to put it in Carriage Green Park. That was kind of their primary spot. And then when we got activated, when we heard about this, we got a petition going, and we talked with the Park District, who's strongly opposed, and the village, who was strongly opposed, and of course, our residents of the area and the petition, and we talked with Chair Aaron Lawler at the time, and he realized that this was really quite not a good area. And as a matter of fact, he even, you know, wrote an email committing that that location would be eliminated. And I want to take just a minute to read it so that anybody listening can hear. This is from May 25th of 2018 from Aaron Lawler, who was the Lake County Board Chair. Kathy, I have requested that the Lake County Public Works Department eliminate Carriage Green Park as a location for a new water reservoir. As your representative, your concerns are my concerns, and the more we learned, the more concerned we were. Not only would the proposed water reservoir encroach on an already undersized community park, it would also likely create an attractive nuisance and the potential for injury, accidents, and liability. Following our conversation, I spoke with our public works staff and have concluded that there are no engineering options that sufficiently address the concerns you and your neighbors shared with me over the past couple of weeks. I want to thank you and the Carriages of Gross Point neighborhood for your outreach. In the future, I've asked staff from LCPW, the Village of Vernon Hills, and the Park District to engage me in these types of conversations earlier in the planning process as we could have headed this off as an unworkable option much sooner. Please share this message with the HOA leadership as well as the recipients and signers of the petition. As always, please feel free to reach out on this or any other issue. Best, Aaron. So, of course, we did circulate that, not just to our to our board, but to all of our residents, including those who had signed the petition, that were just some of the residents of our area and other areas. So as you can imagine, when we just heard that over two years later, this is up again, and this is apparently back on as their primary location with them not having done much due diligence on all the other possible locations within Vernon Hills, we were we were pretty shocked. So just recently heard about this and knew your board meeting was tonight and wanted to get on and talk with you guys about it. I know you're gonna get some more information from your own staff, but, you know, we really feel that this is a very underutilized, underserved, small park to begin with, and to put such a huge concrete water reservoir that would still, even though it's 34 feet deep, 10 feet of it would still be above ground. And they also would put a 50-foot by 35-foot booster pump station in as well. So they'd really be clogging up a very small park as it is. And we really think all the other locations that they have on there, they're in office parks, they're in in hardscape areas like the Nike missile site, you know, that those really need to have their due diligence done, and that those would be much better suited rather than this location that is highly visible in a residential area would impact property values negatively. And so, again, we respectfully request that the village board would also oppose this and put that in writing, you know, to support Lake County taking it off the table again.
Just as a point of information, the village didn't take any action for, in favor of or opposed to. I was going to attend that Saturday morning meeting with Aaron, which was
Right.
a day or two before he wrote the email, and the meeting was canceled because there was a downpour that day. We're gonna meet with the residents at the site and discuss the details of it. And then again, Aaron preempted any further meeting. So the village did not take any actions affirmative or
Right.
in the opposite at that two years ago.
Yes, thank you.
Just a point of information.
Thank you. Yeah. And the reason the meeting was even canceled to begin with was because Aaron sent this on a Friday. So that's why the meeting was canceled, rain or no rain, because we did have a backup rain date for it. But yes, thank you, and I appreciate that you were gonna be there and, you know, that you have that history as well, you know, to share with with others who may not have that history. So thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
And before I have any board members, in case of any board members, a question. Dave, did you have any information you wanted to address this? Have you been in contact with Lake County?
Yeah, we've had, I've had one meeting with Lake County. Mark and I have had a meeting with not just Lake County Public Works staff, but their county administrator and Julie Simpson, the county board representative from the area. Let me start off by saying, the water reservoir is absolutely needed within Vernon Hills. We're all supportive of it. I think what we're talking about is what is the proper location for it? They've given us seven different locations. Some of them, such as the one in Greg's Landing, off of Greg's Parkway, 45 in Buffalo Grove Road, those ones don't have the area to expand, so I don't think those are as viable. But I think there are some other viable locations in town. I think their
Well, several of them not so close to residential, correct?
Absolutely. Absolutely. And that was one of the key factors we shared with them is let's try to avoid putting it in a residential area. In terms of the locations, I think the next to their treatment plant is still a viable location. I did suggest the Forge Club location also. They need about 1.5 acres. They might have to acquire one of the adjacent parcels also. But it's needed. I think we need to figure out the sighting of it, and I do not have enough information, nor have they supplied it in terms of what the costs are, why this is preferred over some of the other ones. We need to get in a room. We need to keep talking about it and figure out what the best location. But certainly, Mark and I have had discussions, and we're trying to see whether or not the adjacent to the treatment plant, is that a better location. There is some concern from the county in terms of a timeframe. In terms of the federal, you know, the land was transferred from the Park Service, so the Park Service doesn't want to give up park land, but certainly they don't want it not to be here, and we're, the other option is to put it at the Carriages, and we're gonna destroy some parkland. They're against, they want to make sure we preserve park space. So that's kind of where we're at right now. We think there are some other options, and we need to continue the discussions with Lake County Public Works.
Any questions or comments from any board members? Because personally, I would like to have you guys follow up with county, and if we need to have somebody from county come in and say why they're just all of a sudden changing their mind and dumping this where they told us they weren't going to. I mean, could we get somebody from county? Maybe Julie could come in, or somebody from Lake County Public Works?
We can request that, absolutely.
Trustee Oppenheim?
My engineering department.
I'm a bit unclear. Have they actually said that now this is their number one spot, or is it that this is just still in the running even though we thought it wasn't in the running anymore?
They've they've pointed towards this is the location they would prefer to have it installed. They're not done with the discussions, but they've made it pretty clear.
But it's come back to be not only in the running, but also at the top of the list.
Well, if you if you look at the documentation of what they've written for the other sites, it's like they've clearly either not done work or done swags at what is wrong with these other sites, and they've looked at the positives of the Carriages without looking at all the negatives of being residential, taking up park space,
Right.
impacting property values, impacting the park and the aesthetics of it, you know, all that kind of stuff. They've kind of like just, you know, some of the comments on the others are, you know, lower lower elevation, so they need to do more pumping, which has not been quantified, right? You know, I mean, all these things that we don't know, and, you know, there's also some degree of, you know, where's that tradeoff when you're talking about taking up park space and impacting residents and property values versus putting it in a hardscape area or in a in a corporate Parkway?
Do they make any comments as to additional cost if they had to do more pumping or difficulty that that would
We have none of that information at this at this stage.
Okay.
Which is why I'd like to have the county, I mean, why if former Chairman Lawler so clearly said no?
Right.
And now, all of a sudden, they've flipped on it. I'd really like to have somebody from county come in and explain that.
We'll invite them.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Thank you. No, that's all. I think there's some other people who wanted to say just a brief thing here or there for you.
Okay. Anyone else wish to address this, or are we?
Feels good to breathe. Hello, my name is Christine Spieslaw. I am a 25-year resident of Vernon Hills and the Carriages of Gross Point Circle. I'd like to add more to what Kathy had talked about. In his letter to Mr. Brown, Mr. McFarland, when he talks about the different attributes to the different sites, he uses ambiguous and inconsistent attributes and metrics when he's evaluating other sites. For instance, he uses the word carbon footprint. I'm a clinical terminologist. To me, carbon footprint can mean a number of different things. And he doesn't explain what he means by that, and he doesn't explain what the implications of that carbon footprint is to those sites. Yet that same carbon footprint is not applied to the Carriages site, which will be within yards that can be measured with a tape measure of people's residences, whereas all the other sites to be evaluated are either commercial or or other sites. They're not residential. And then the other thing I wanted to say was he really didn't fully vet a lot of the other sites, for instance, the South Lake Industrial Park. He cites that the developer is uninterested, and what does that mean? And how far did he push him? Did he get additional information for that from that developer? So often, when we see the county improving roads, they are, they take land from homeowners, an eminent domain, and why isn't this process being used from this developer to take that that necessary easement for that property? And that's what I want to add to this, and I thank you for the opportunity to speak with you. Thank you.
That pretty much reiterates why the county engineering and McFarland needs to come speak to us.
Yeah.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for having us. My name's Valerie Zanardo. I've been living at the Carriages for seven years. What sold me on the Carriages is the beauty of the the environment, the parks and what have you. I feel discriminated against for this project because, first of all, two years ago, it was decided it wasn't going to be using our area for the reservoir. All of a sudden, I just found out about this this afternoon. It's nice enough for Kathy to tell me about it, but it seems like even though these are our homes and it's not up in value like $500,000 or $600,000, like a lot of the other areas in here, why don't they look at those spots? Those homeowners would be screaming too. So these are our properties that we work very hard for, just like everybody else, and for them to ambiguously just say, we're gonna do it here without doing their due diligence, that's wrong, and I feel very discriminated against. And I'll just say I'm in commercial insurance, and that would be a huge liability to put it there. So that's all I wanted to say. Thank you for your time. Okay.
And I don't want to give anybody any false hope. This is, remember, this is a county.
Yeah, I was just gonna ask. Do we have any say in the matter whatsoever, other than?
Final final decision? No. We, other than suing them, which we really wouldn't have any grounds to do, you know, I mean, I don't play an attorney on TV, but.
Park District property, there is a plat that's been recorded with the county.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, a plat that's been recorded with the county that has an easement on it for a reservoir in this location.
Yeah.
So the county has a legal document on which it's basing its actions.
And that all goes back to?
The spot hasn't been picked out of the blue. This was recorded years ago. It's not our property, so we don't have really a say in in where it's gonna be located.
Yeah.
As far as permitting goes, we're probably not gonna have a say in permitting either. And permits, if they need one from us, are ministerial in nature. It isn't something that we can withhold because, I mean, I understand residents are upset, but we're limited in terms of our legal capacity. We certainly can apply pressure and request that other locations be considered, but we are not really a player in terms of ownership of property and ultimate property rights here.
Yeah, this all goes back to when that Lake Michigan water came in, yeah.
It's Park District land that's encumbered by an easement.
But we will make every effort to see what we can do.
What's the reason they give when you have this email and now it's completely, or do they give a reason? Or nothing?
I I emailed them, and I didn't get a response, other than from Chair Sandy Hart saying she wasn't aware of it, she would look into it. And obviously, Julie Simpson, who is for our region, she is aware of it and has chosen not to respond. But although I totally understand you don't have authority, I think you do have a lot of influence. And so even if it's, you know, to state your position on it, which would carry some weight, you know, that's why, you know, we would still ask that you that you do that and you consider that. Because, you know, technically, we have, we as residents have influence, right? I mean, that's really what this is about, is it's influence in, you know, trying to get them to really evaluate those other areas and do their due diligence on it, where when you when you look at things that Christine was pointing out and all that documentation, not that you need to, but it's it's very lightweight, and you can, you reading through it, it seems very clear that they are totally angling for only this location, if you know what I mean, in terms of how you can position other things, so.
No, and I agree with you. I just wanted to make sure we were upfront with you about
Right, yes.
our lack of power and, you know.
Yes, I know. And the Park District has already put that on record, a couple, oops, sorry, a couple of years ago, and I know that they're planning on doing something again. So we'll be at their meeting on Thursday as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Patty Nagel, and I've been a resident of Vernon Hills for about 30 years. And I'm not gonna be redundant. I concur with all the statements that have been made by Kathy Knapp. My biggest concern is not only property values going down, but also just the aesthetics of what it's gonna look like. It's very visible from Route 45. I am very encouraged, and I very much thank the board for suggesting that Julie Simpson and other individuals from Lake County come to a board meeting so that we can try to flush some of these issues out. And what that's saying to me is that you really care about the Carriages and our community, and I thank you for that.
Any other citizens that wish to address the board about something that's not on later agenda? Yeah?
Hi, how's it going?
Good.
Can I grab this chair here? I'm probably not even gonna use this thing, but, you know, am I, is it okay?
Oh, yes, sure.
Sure.
Go right ahead.
Wonderful, thank you. I don't have any eraser, so we'll be using it on the next page. So my name's James Elliott. Glad to see all of you. Do you, do I just go now, or?
Go right ahead.
Wonderful, good. So the thing that I want to talk to you all about, and you guys can listen to if you're interested.
Please, please speak into a microphone.
Oh, thank you. I apologize. I'm not used to having a microphone. This is exciting, this is a new and exciting experience for me, and I'm glad I have a mic. So here we go. So what I want to talk to everybody about is the the current state of our society and how to improve it, right? So, start with this life, right? Life. Life is valuable, right? All life is valuable. Human life, plant life, animal life, all life on the planet Earth is valuable. It all has value. Human life has the most value of any life on Earth. So with that, because human life is so valuable, we have rights, right? Even though, what is the Constitution? Inalienable rights, God-given rights? We have rights, which is great. I like to add to those rights, the right to life, the right, and what do we need to live? We need food. We need water. We need shelter, and we need medicine. Every human being on the planet, they're, all their lives are extremely valuable, so valuable that they all have a right to what they need in order to survive. Now, unfortunately, there's people on this earth that don't have what they need to live. That's a problem. It's a big problem. It's probably one of the biggest problems on Earth. If, because we're all humans, right? We were, we were all born humans, for whatever reason. I don't know why I was born me, or you were born you, but we were all born who we were for some crazy reason. So we're all humans, living this life, right? And, okay, what are we here for? Why are we here? Well, I'm gonna tell you why we're here. We're here to help each other. We are here to ensure that every human being on the planet Earth has what they need in order to live. That's the purpose of life. If anybody was wondering why they're alive, that's why. Okay? So why don't people have that? What's going on? What are we doing wrong? Why aren't we, why aren't we working on it? Why aren't we trying to solve it? Why is it not the number one priority in our society? What about war? Can we end it? Yes. We're smart. We're not stupid. We're very smart. Look, we built this great place with these wonderful trustees, is that what you call? With these wonderful trustees. We've done so much great stuff. We can stop war. We can feed people. We can give people houses and homes. We can do what I promised. But what's the problem? The problem is, we don't. What do we do instead? You know what we do instead, don't you? I'm not pointing fingers and trying to blame anybody. It's nobody's fault. We're all just born who we are, and playing the game and doing the best with the hand that we were dealt. It's nobody's fault, right? But now I'm sharing this this stuff that I that I've thought about. Maybe I'm crazy, maybe I'm gonna say, I don't know. But I'm sharing this stuff with you, so now you know, and you probably already know, right, that there's stuff wrong in the world. So, for example, one of the main things that I noticed was, you all, you all, you all know about peeps, the little candy thing for Easter, those little peep treats, right? Easter candies. So there's a factory where those are made. About three to five years ago, the workers of that factory went on strike. It's a big deal to go on strike. You could lose your house. You could lose your job. The company could go out of business. So these brave workers went on strike. They said, something's not right. We're not getting paid enough, or whatever's happening. It's not safe to make these peeps anymore. But there's a problem with us working at this factory. They went on strike. Okay, big deal. Factory could have went out of business. People could have lost their jobs. Then I get to thinking, right? Well, what if peeps goes out of business? It's really not that, is that my time?
All right. Go ahead, sir.
Oh, thanks. So what if peeps goes out of business? Really, not that big of a deal. What's the number one thing that would happen if peeps go out of business? There'd be no peeps. Who cares, right? Because peeps, I'll tell you, it's not healthy. Don't go home and eat your peeps. If you're sick, don't eat a big bowl of peeps. If you need energy, don't eat peeps. It's unhealthy food, right? And the production of peeps, what does it cause? It causes pollution. It's detrimental to the environment, okay? But these people, these workers, that live in our society, that live in our civilization, go to work every day, 40 hours a week, 35 years before they can retire, making peeps, doing a job that doesn't need to be done, that's unhealthy, and that's destructive to the environment. And that's the society that we live in. While, all the while, there's people without food. There's people without shelter, and there's people without medicine, but at the, but in our wonderful, great, fantastic society, we have people go do these jobs that are detrimental and unnecessary. That's a problem. We can fix it. I don't know how. I have no idea, but it's possible. There's people smarter than me that can fix this problem. Don't look to me for any answers. I don't have any of them. Just talking, all right? Any questions? Comments? Okay, have a good one.
I'd just like to say, declarations of war is just a little bit above our pay grade, so I wasn't, I wasn't sure what what you're hoping to get from us in terms of that.
I'm not hoping to get anything. I just feel like I like, this is a pretty important topic.
Yeah.
I think it's the most important topic in the world. I don't hear anybody talking about it. I haven't read anything, you know, I mean, I've read some stuff, you know, from people that I like, but I haven't read anything that's like, point blank, human life is valuable. This should be the main focus of our society. I haven't heard anybody talking about it, and I haven't read any, read anything from anybody that's, that's, that that is their main argument. If I had, I wouldn't be here talking. I'd let somebody else talk about it. So.
Thank you.
Have a good one. Thanks.
Yep. Any other citizens wishing to address the board? Okay. If not, then we'll move on. Village manager.
Just two quick announcements. First of all, there's only one board meeting scheduled in August. So the next meeting is scheduled for August 11th at 7:00 PM here in the village boardroom. And then the second announcement is that the mayor will be signing Declaration 20-09, which is a continuation of the state of emergency in the Village of Vernon Hills. Just a reminder, we've done this every board meeting since March 19th, when the governor declared the state of emergency in the state of Illinois, and we will be continuing to do this until the governor declares an end to the state of emergency. And this declaration will stay active until the board meeting on August 11th, 2020.
Okay. Thank you. That moves us down to public works director, village engineer, the EJNE Quiet Zone.
Thank you very much. Really wanted to provide an update to the village board about our quiet zone. It's on the EJNE railroad. It's on the EJNE railroad. In 2008, we partnered with, I think, thirteen other communities, and it needs to be recertified. So, through the recertification process, railroad engineers are not required to sound their horn day and night at every crossing. I believe trustee Cook at the last, or the previous board meeting had mentioned this topic, and how important it was to our community to make sure people can sleep at night so people, railroad engineers, aren't blowing their horn. So, moving forward, we've reached out to our partners, we've asked them, are they interested in participating to, to recertify the quiet zone? There's actually, the quiet zone starts in North Chicago, and it goes all the way through to Barrington. So, we're going to have conversations with them, see if they wanted to hire Patrick Engineering in our behalf. Patrick Engineering is also helping Buffalo Grove with the quiet zone that is right across the street here, for the Canadian National. So, just really looking for board concurrence to move forward with keeping the quiet zone maintained. There's some initial costs, it's a, it's a breakdown depending on how many partners we have. Currently, there's three quiet zones. Depending on interest, we could change the locations of the quiet zone should one party not want to participate. I don't understand why one would not want to participate, but just in case. So, they would recreate the, or recertify the new quiet zone. So, just really wanted to provide an update. We hope to bring this back before the board in IGA form, August 11th, but just wanted to give you a brief update.
So, did you say that during the recertification process, the engineers are required? Or is that only if we are not recertified?
If we are not recertified.
Not recertified, then they will blow their horns. And when does the certification end?
The certification period is typically every three years, and we're right at that period where we need to recertify.
How long does the recertification take?
Recertification typically is about a ninety-day process. As long as we've applied, there's some consideration.
There'll be an extension if we're in the application process? So they're not going to say, oh, it expired yesterday, or and start tonight?
They'll give us consideration as usual.
As long as we apply, okay.
Yeah. There's also some, if they identify any deficiencies, there's a cost for addressing those. For instance, when the quiet zone was done for the Canadian National, you see the quick curb paddles here at our crossing of Route 45. The village of Vernon Hills financed that previously to assist with making sure the quiet zone is in place. So there might be some ancillary costs. I can't share those with you until they go through the process. So, kind of chicken and the egg in terms of cost.
And the irregular replacement of paddles on occasion. They get hit.
Yes, sir.
Anything else I need to do?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Can, since it's Mr. Brown's time now, couple of things. First of all, I want to thank the department for putting in the curb cuts in the crosswalk on Lakeview just south of the EJNE, as I'd requested last fall. And I'd seen, seen a lot of people walking across there. I was just curious, though, when, when is it actually going to be painted with the actual crosswalk? I know the signs are there.
Our striping contractor is coming into town. It was sequenced, and I believe they're going to be in town either, I believe it's next week, so very soon.
Very soon, okay.
And we'll make sure the signage is up, the striping is done, and it's similar to our other crosswalks.
Great, thank you. And then, what about the EJNE crossing on Milwaukee there?
Thank you. We're very, very pleased to now have a complete, other than the mall, which Mr. Ferillo, myself, and others are, are working on, other than the mall, you can ride a bike from Libertyville to Lincolnshire along Milwaukee Avenue. So we're going to finish the mall and make sure there's a sidewalk along the west side there. And then the remaining piece is the EJNE railroad. And the EJNE railroad, the F, the, they were directed by the ICC judge to install that crossing by, before August of 2021. So we have a little time before the CN will actually install that crossing. But they have a lot of other safety things they need to do on the railroad, so that's why the judge gave them till one year from next month.
Basically, within a year, that whole path will be done.
Yes, sir.
Excellent. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah. Okay. Any other staff have anything? If not, then the next item would be omnibus vote agenda. I know, from talking to trustee Schultz, you'd like to have D pulled, correct?
That is correct, sir.
Okay. So we'll pull D, so it would be items A through C and E through G. Is that correct?
Motion so made.
Second.
Motion is second. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
President Byrne. Trustee Schultz.
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
Trustee Takaoka. Trustee Brown.
Aye.
President Protem Cook.
Aye.
Trustee Markwart.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item D is approval and passage of an ordinance, amending ordinance 201649, granting certain approvals for the property commonly known as Woodland Chase, located intersection of Buffalo Grove Road and US Route 45. This is the fence ordinance.
Correct.
Did you wish to comment on it?
I'll make my comment as I cast my ballot.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve item D?
So may.
Second.
Motion is second. Sure you don't want to comment now, which is more appropriate, and then we can just vote?
Before we vote. No, I had to leave the last meeting midstream during, excuse me, the discussions on that topic. At the point in time I left, I was not going to vote in the affirmative. Maybe my fellow trustees and the petitioners might have changed my mind, but at this juncture, I wish to cast a vote that is representative of the way that I feel about this issue.
Okay. Then, if there are no other comments or questions, roll call, please.
President Byrne. Trustee Schultz.
Present.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
Trustee Takaoka. Trustee Brown.
Aye.
President Protem Cook.
Aye.
Trustee Markwart.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. Unfinished additional business. Approval and passage of an ordinance, 202087, an ordinance calling for a public hearing and joint review board meeting to consider the designation of a redevelopment project area, and the approval of a redevelopment plan and project for the Hawthorne Mall development project, redevelopment project area.
Lots of projects in that title.
Yeah.
Thank you, President Protem. As the board knows, staff has been in discussions with the mall ownership for several months regarding the proposed redevelopment of the Hawthorne Mall. As part of that redevelopment, the village is considering the establishment of a TIF district to include most of the mall, but excluding the Macy's property, the J.C.'s Penny property, and the Carson's Furniture property. As part of that process, on March 17th, 2020, the village authorized the preparation of an eligibility study and a redevelopment plan and project to be completed by Kane McKenna and Associates. On July 10th, 2020, that eligibility study and TIF plan was made available here at the village hall and remains available for review by anybody in the public that would like to review the plans. As part of establishing a TIF district, or considering the establishment of a district, the TIF Act requires that we pass an ordinance, which we're doing tonight, to establish a public hearing date and a joint review board date, meeting. This ordinance before you establishes the TIF public hearing date as October 6th at 6:00 PM. It also establishes the joint review board meeting, the initial joint review board meeting, on August 13th, 2020, at 4:00 PM. The joint review board, as you know, is made up of a representative of each taxing district represented in the TIF district. The role of the joint review board is advisory in nature. They will be provided the TIF plan, the eligibility study, the record regarding the establishment of the TIF, and the JRB is tasked with coming up with a recommendation to this village board as to whether or not to approve the TIF district. That is a recommending, it's a recommending body, and you'll have that, you should have that recommendation from the JRB within thirty days of the final JRB meeting. So this ordinance basically establishes those two dates. It's part of the TIF Act, and it's required. It also sets forth the notice requirements regarding getting notice out to the taxing bodies, as well as property owners within the TIF district relative to these two important dates.
And again, this ordinance does not establish the TIF district, this is all still prepar-
Yeah, there are further steps. Joint review board first, public hearing in October, all things moving in the right direction. We would present TIF ordinances, there are three ordinances needed to establish a TIF, by the end of October is what we're shooting for. So this does not do that, this is just a step in the process.
Okay. Are there any comments or questions from the board regarding this?
Motion to approve ordinance 2020-087.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion is second. Roll call, please.
Trustee Markwart.
Aye.
Trustee Brown.
Aye.
Trustee Takaoka. Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
Trustee Schultz.
Aye.
President Byrne. President Protem Cook.
Aye. Motion carries.
New business, communication, Butterfield Road Bike Path. Mr. Brown, you're back up.
Thank you very much. Mr. Stordel is putting up a map which really helps, helps with an overview. If you look at the map, you'll see a red delineation. This is the subject matter we're talking about. It's the east side of Butterfield Road, it's a bike path from the EJNE railroad north to Greg's Parkway. Our GIS staff also included our overall bike path network, so you can see how this one link really assists in terms of traversing the village by bike or for pedestrians. You may recall, in the previous five-year plans and last budget year, we had $150,000 in a budget for that, it was in our capital fund, and we pursued it. Based on some analysis, some additional estimates, and conversations with LDOT, there are a couple of important factors. One, almost fifty percent of this path is actually in the village of Mundaline. Oddly enough, they extend on a number of occasions to the east side of Butterfield Road. And then, the overall jurisdiction of the path is within the LDOT county right-of-way. So, after some discussions back and forth, LDOT has stepped forward and said they would be the lead agency to oversee the project, to bid it, and to oversee the construction and construction inspection. Our estimates are, this is closer to $410,000. So LDOT has asked us whether we would still want to pursue this with them. My, my recommendation, I know things are difficult right now, I understand they have a December 1 budget versus our May 1 budget. This would not get built this construction season, they have to do the planning, et cetera. I would expect it would be built next summer at best, so it might be into the following budget year. But this might, if LDOT does not do this, I don't see the village as going to spend $410,000 herself to, to implement this. But I do think it's a very important connection, so my recommendation is that we do entertain their offer of them overseeing it. They do not want to utilize motor fuel tax money, and we have our larger Lakeview project, et cetera, that we're going to be expending that money anyway. So the request would be for this to not come out of motor fuel tax money, and it would come out of our general fund money instead. The reason behind that, if you have to go through a similar process to what we did for Lakeview, it takes a lot of time, there's a lot more documentation and steps, and it can be built readily because it's a simple bike path. And we don't think it's that complicated that it requires going through a phase one, phase two, and phase three process. So, with that, I would entertain as far as the board's desire to move forward.
So you're, you're looking for us to approve you entering into an IGA with Lake County Department of Transportation?
Yeah, thank you. We're, we're seeking village board approval of entering into a IGA with LDOT and earmarking a not-to-exceed amount of $150,000 from our general fund account.
Okay. Comments or questions from the board?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion is second. Any other comments, questions?
I was going to say, we were, we were just at, I'm forgetting the name of the restaurant, but it used to be Kaiser's. Just last week, hits just the other day, and we saw a woman across the street from us walking on, on the grass there. And my wife said, wow, it's kind of unusual that she's just walking along the street there with no sidewalk, so. Quite timely, and I think it's a good project.
No, I agree. I've ran, I've tried to run around and then come back that way, and I have to run through the grass as well, and it's not as comfortable as the path. So I agree, we need that.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any, any possibility of extending it further? I see that there's a big gap from where the red is till where the blue starts, further north on Butterfield, or is there a sidewalk across the way that people use?
Well, doesn't, doesn't the county have some of their black, some of their bike path that's, that's right at curb edge?
You know, when you look at this map, and they're showing, thank you, when they're showing existing path, if you look at where it says Bedford, just in, where it says Bedford just into Mundaline, that blue line moving forward all the way to Libertyville, I don't think that's an existing path. I think that is actually the grass protection strip that's back up curb, that's maybe a eighteen-inch, two-foot width.
And I think it's more like three or four feet wide. It looked like they redid it and expanded it.
Yeah, they did, they did go over it. I guess to answer the question of-
But it's not, a standard bike path is what, eight feet, right?
Yes, yes.
It's not that wide.
Yeah, and I tried to see if we could just extend that further south to the EJNE. LDOT's newer policy is, these, these maintenance strips, they're really, they don't last, they don't expect that they're going to continue that practice into the future. So, they said, they thought for this project, this was three years ago, that they would remove them into the future. This one, it seemed like they, they decided to seal code over it. But to answer your question, from the EJNE going north, there's a lot more grade transition and retaining walls and complications with that. We might be able to pursue that as part of a grant into the future, but looking at the price tag of the, you know, $400, $410,000, this might be manageable at this time. But I do not disagree that it would be nice to have it extended all the way and tie into Gulf Road.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Okay, we have a motion is second, roll call, please.
Trustee Brown.
Aye.
Trustee Markwart.
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
Trustee Schultz.
Aye.
Trustee Takaoka. President Byrne. President Protem Cook.
Aye. Motion carries. Any other new business or communication anybody has?
Yes, sir.
Yes. Trustee Markwart.
Just some concerns. Baseball has started, and my concerns are, I think in two weeks, there'll be a tournament. It's, normally you'll look at fifty teams, I think it's forty teams. And one of the big things I've looked at, because I've actually had some contact from coaches or- coaches or parents, I should say. The, the way that it's set up on the pinwheel, a lot of people are not using the standard area, they're using the cross area. So as of a week ago, or close to two weeks ago, I should say, there were two games going, there were probably over 80 people. I know, in fact, the standard is 50. Now you have two teams playing to either side, but everybody's congregating in the Also too, the bathrooms are not cleaned well. My concern is, you're going to have a tournament that's coming up, 40 teams roughly, in a small area. Do we do this or do we not do this? I do know there was a situation where a coach, his wife had been in contact with an individual that was positive. She was tested and it was negative. And I believe they did take him and his son out from the coaching at that time. But still, this is getting to a point where we're going to have groups of people and not from our area, from other areas. Should we or should we not go through? We had the pipeline that was canceled out. So my concern is, do we do this for the safety of our residents and children?
I can make a comment. I've attended two girls softball tournaments. There were U-14, 16, and 18. The parks where they were at, this was in Kenosha, they were the four corners. So there was a lot of separation and no one used the stands, everybody used lawn chairs. Our pinwheel is where the problem is. I guess if we can maybe utilize other diamonds, I don't, it's been so long since my boy played ball, but at what level do they need the mound? Is that, that's at the 12-year-old level, right?
Yeah, but you're...
U-12?
That's it, out of, I don't know where you could split them.
Yeah, that's the biggest problem. Because, yeah, I mean, you know, there's a couple of diamonds that are a little more separate over in Evergreen or whatever you want, Deer Path area. There's also some over at Gross Point. You know, that is a problem.
Do you think, would it ease your concerns if we were to find a way to limit them to just two out of the four pinwheel at any given time?
It's a possibility. It's just, it's just, the design is great, but unfortunately with what's happened to us recently, it is not. I know that the gazebo that's in the middle is taped off. People go through it. So you're, it's, and also too, the, Dave knows, I probably jump on this a lot, the bathrooms are terrible. And they're supposed to be cleaned by the park district and I don't think they're done properly. So that's, that's another factor.
Yeah, up in Wisconsin, the organizers had a couple of staff people on hand that were at least spraying everything down on a...
And they don't do that here.
Yeah. You bring up a good point. That pinwheel really is problematic.
Yeah. Staff, any suggestions or ideas where we can go?
I don't have the answer as far as whether a tournament should or shouldn't be held, but I can tell you how we've reacted to some of the concerns that were raised from previous baseball games. They have established a protocol where you're coming off of the parking lot to the west, you're to enter one way going eastbound towards the center of the pinwheel, and then you're to exit southerly towards the concession building and then around. One of the complications was the baseball groups appeared that they were following the guidelines, they were wearing their mask. We had some difficulties with the lacrosse group that they were doing a good job when they were on the fields, but once they left the field, they were co-mingling at that location. So we had some discussions. We've added some additional signs, please wear your mask, stay six feet apart. And we installed that just after 4th of July. Bathrooms, absolutely, to Mike's point, we talked to the park district who oversees the bathrooms for us. On weekends, there was only one cleaning. We've asked them to have a second cleaning afterwards. It sounds like the park district, the affiliates, we would pay a quarter of the cost for the second cleaning and they are moving forward with additional cleanings. But in terms of whether or not an event should be held or not, it's over my pay grade. Interesting enough, this week, I was supposed to be in the Netherlands, co-tournament director for the World Ultimate and Guts Frisbee Championships. And we were going to have 12,000 people. We ended up canceling because it was that large of a group and it was right next to Italy when they were spiking. But in this atmosphere, I don't have as good of an answer for you.
Well, I'd like us to at least look into what we can do, including the potential of maybe limiting field use. So, because the pinwheel is really the significant problem. Because like Trustee Schultz, I've also been to at least one travel tournament and it was spread out. There was no, you know, no close field situation.
Yeah, if they used five and six, the girl softball field or the U-10, I mean, that's pretty well spread out. But when you need that mound, that's...
Well, but they could restructure their tournament to work around that or, I mean, it's just baseball, it's...
See, what you've had in the past couple of weeks, I think Lake Zurich has had a football player, a baseball player, and Poms that have been positive. And I think even in, for our own high school, we have, I think, one or two, I believe.
One for sure that I know of, yeah.
And I did hear the suggestion that Gross Point might be an opportunity. We certainly can talk to them and try to make it as safe as possible. Or if the board desires not to have the event, we certainly can go that way.
Well, I want to bring it up because I would want the comments from our board because it's, I don't know, it's a very touchy area. From a guy that's done sports his whole life, I hate to see this go away, but I, it's a safety aspect.
Maybe, Mark, you could have a conversation with Jeff tomorrow, because if they're having their board meeting tomorrow, this might or might not be on their docket, or not tomorrow.
Thursday.
Thursday.
Thursday. Yeah, I have, I have no contact with the baseball group. Soccer, yes. Lacrosse, yes. But I have no contact with the baseball group whatsoever.
Yeah, so maybe you can talk to...
I can talk to Jeff, let him know.
Yeah, and let him know that it was a concern that was brought up and...
Because otherwise, we can, I mean, if need be, we can step in and say, hey, you just can't do that.
If, if your intent is to do that, since the tournament is only two weeks away, I think you would need to make that decision quickly because they're going to need to contact the players and groups and teams, et cetera.
Can we, how could we word, could we word it that they need to strictly adhere to the governor's guidelines about proximity?
We can let them know that the concern has been raised. We can advise them that they need to, that they can only use two of those fields at a time, choose other locations within the parks if they need to use those fields. And I think, as Trustee Marquardt brought up the fact, or someone brought up, that some of these places have volunteers on staff to help clean the bathrooms. And we can, we can ask them to require that as well.
Yeah, at least spritz...
At least spray the disinfectant.
That's all they were doing. People were keeping the bathrooms clean, because I was there all day and they were in fine shape. But, and they were, basically, all they were doing was just spritzing everything, kind of paper towels.
Okay, we can do that and then we will report back to the board in the transmittal packet on Friday.
Would you prefer it if we gave you the authority, as we've done, to pay bills and things like that at the...
No, I think it would fall under the emergency.
You can trust me to pay millions of dollars in bills without losing a penny?
But wouldn't this fall under the mayor's emergency? Wouldn't this fall under, your authority on this would fall under the mayor's emergency?
Yes, it would.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, we already have the authority based on that.
Yeah, we will address it. I agree. I agree, it would fall under executive, an executive order of the mayor if necessary.
Correct. Yeah, that would be my assumption. Thank you.
We will address it.
Okay.
We'll keep you posted.
Any other new business, communication?
I think she's looking down on purpose, but before you adjourn, I think Trustee Brown would like to address the board.
Because I have one thing, but if you'd rather, I'm assuming you...
Go ahead.
Oh, I just, just kind of quickly, the American Volleyball Coaches Association, known as AVCA, just recently recognized Vernon Hills High School as one of only 35 boys' teams in the country that achieved the national academic, all academic team status. There were only two or three, I believe, Stevenson and Vernon Hills were the two from this area. But it was only 35 total teams. And, and so congratulations to Coach Curry and his staff at the high school on achieving that honor because it's a, AVCA is a big-time national coaches association, so it's quite an achievement for the team. And now to Trustee Brown.
Well, I'll be brief because I probably won't be able to speak a lot because I cry because I care. But I am resigning from the board because it's time for the Brown family to move to the next chapter of their lives. So we are moving now to Georgia. I want to thank the village board, the residents. We've lived here for 18 years, one year less than the place that I call home. So this place means a lot to me. It's very hard for me to move, but it's the best thing for our family right now. So I'll be back to visit. I've cried every single day since I found out that we were moving. Didn't expect it to go this fast, but our house sold really quickly. Everything's just kind of fallen into place, so I know that it's meant to be. But I just want to thank everybody. I've made great friends. So all the residents, this village is run amazingly. I've seen other places that are not like that. So I am very proud to be, to have been a part of this board and have been a part of this village. And I will miss you guys. So that's it.
And I think I speak for the entire board and staff and that we appreciated your service big time, big time. And the best to you and your family. Anything else under new business? Okay. Then I will entertain a motion to adjourn the board meeting to go to committee of the whole. Do we have executive tonight or no? Okay.
Motion to adjourn the village board meeting of July 21st.
Motion a second. All in favor, sign them by by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the ayes have it. Now, do we need another?
Yes. Motion to appoint President Protem. Correct.
So then, with that in mind, I'd like to call the Vernon Hills Committee of the Whole Meeting for July 21st of 2020 to order. Roll call, please.
President Byrne. Trustee Cook.
Present.
Trustee Brown.
Here.
Trustee Schultz.
Here.
Trustee Marquardt.
Here.
Trustee Takaka. Trustee Oppenheim.
Here.
We have a quorum and we need a motion to appoint a President Protem for the duration of the meeting.
Mr. Clerk, at this juncture, I would like to propose and move that Trustee Cook be named President Protem for the remainder of this village board committee of the whole meeting.
Second.
Second. Go ahead.
We have a motion and a second by Trustee Brown. Roll call.
President Byrne. Trustee Cook.
Aye.
Trustee Brown.
Aye.
Trustee Schultz.
Aye.
Trustee Marquardt.
Aye.
Trustee Takaka. Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
Motion carries, okay. First item of business is approval of the committee of the whole meeting minutes from July 7th, 2020. Is there a motion to approve?
Come in. Second.
Motion a second. Any comments, questions, corrections? Hearing none, roll call, please.
President Protem Cook.
Aye.
Trustee Marquardt.
Aye.
Trustee Takaka. Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
Trustee Schultz.
Epstein.
Trustee Brown.
Aye.
President Byrne.
Motion carries. Second item is a request from Hawthorne Mall for approval of an outdoor makers and artisans' market on their property located at 122 Hawthorne Center.
Thank you. I can give you a brief summary real quick. Shown on the screen in front of you in red is the proposed location of the artisan makers' market. It would be between Ring Road and Macy's. The event would be conducted every Saturday and Sunday from September 5th through October 11th of this year. And the hours of operation would be noon to 5:00 p.m. on Saturdays and 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. on Sundays. This next slide shows how the vendor booths would be arranged. The vendors or craftmakers would offer their goods from their vending booths for the event. Everyone involved would be required to follow health protocols as provided in the Restore Illinois Phase Four Guidelines, specific to retail uses, and also in accordance with whatever the current standing order is from the Illinois Governor's Office. You'll notice there's a controlled entry point and then a controlled exit point so that staff members of the event can count the number of people that are attending the event and better control and promote social distancing. The vendor booths would be 12 feet apart and there would be a hand sanitizer located at each of the booths. So for tonight, if the cow feels the outdoor market is appropriate, staff should be directed to prepare a resolution approving the event in accordance with the conditions that are outlined in your packet. And a representative of Hawthorne Mall is here to answer any questions that you might have.
Good evening. I'm Tom Sheehy. I'm the facilities manager of Hawthorne Mall. I'm just here to represent our specialty leasing manager, Sarah Phelps, who organized this event. And, yeah, so we're, the goal is to have vendors, local vendors, that are artisans or craftmakers be vendors, a part of this event. We're looking for interior tenants to also be represented in this so that way they can draw in some traffic into, into the mall. So we have an artist that's interested in taking a spot. We have a handmade soaps tenant that would like to take a spot. So we're just looking for some local crafters to represent themselves and then I figured, we figured that this would be a nice location to do that.
How does one sign up?
So we have a pricing and general information sheet and then they can contact our specialty leasing manager, Sarah Phelps. There's pricing that's laid out depending on the size of the booth that they want. So like a 12 by 12, so the minimum obviously is going to be 12-foot booth since we're spacing everything 12 feet apart. So it can go from a 12 by 12 to a 12 by 48-foot section depending on how large they want their area to be. And then, and so, you know, we're requiring insurance, we're requiring specific setups because of, you know, obviously the health concerns that there are right now. And so we, yeah, so we're, we have rules and regulations that they need to adhere to and we, yeah, so I mean, everything would go through, through Sarah Phelps though as far as getting anything signed up or our management office. Our receptionist can take applications as well.
When's the first one?
It would be September 5th.
So you're going to run... So you're going to run September 5th through October 11th?
Yes, sir.
Saturdays and Sundays?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions, comments from the board?
I think I have an idea, bringing people to the mall.
Yeah, yeah, I like the idea of bringing some of the people from inside the mall out to, that could be.
And we're not trying to conflict with, you know, the farmer's market, this is a different type of atmosphere for mostly crafts, like this is not farmers, or bakers, or, you know, this is a different type of vendor that would be present.
Okay.
Michael, you're looking for?
A motion to direct staff to prepare a resolution approving the event, subject to the conditions that are outlined in your packet.
Okay, do we have a motion to what he just said?
So may.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion a second, any other comments or questions? Okay, hearing none, roll call, please.
President Byrne. President Pro Tem Cook.
Aye.
Trustee Takaoka. Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
Trustee Schultz.
Aye.
Trustee Brown.
Aye.
Trustee Markwart.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much for your time, good luck to you, take care now.
Next item is request for an outdoor dining and seating establishment permit for Sliced Coal Fired Pizza located at 913 North Milwaukee Avenue.
Thank you, and again, I can give the board a brief summary, I think as everyone is aware, Sliced Pizza will be located in Melody Farm Shopping Center, they're adjacent to the Mini Park, and across from where next door American Eatery is, they will be occupying that entire building. For their outdoor dining license request, they are proposing 12 tables with a seating capacity of 54 customers on the patio located on the north side of their building, there would be a fence located around the entire perimeter of the outdoor area, and there would be self-closing, self-latching gates, two of them, one on the north and one on the south side of the patio. So tonight, if the cow feels that the request is appropriate, staff should be directed to prepare a resolution approving the request, subject to the conditions that are outlined in your packet, and the ownership group from Sliced Pizza is here to answer any questions that you may have.
Hi, I'm Brittany Barth, this is.
Lori Barth.
And when are you guys opening?
Soon, August, we're hoping August 18th.
Okay.
Not in time.
I know. Been looking forward to it.
When are you leaving?
You didn't ask him about delivery.
Yeah.
My one question would be, with your, with the drawing that we've got, this works fine under normal circumstances, is this a little tight for the current guidelines for outdoor from the state in terms of?
No, I don't believe so, it was laid out in accordance with the guidelines, so everything is within the six feet required, as well as it's not, it's not designed to be because of the six-foot distance, we're still leaving six feet between the fence and the park area, so there's a pedestrian walkway past it, and it's actually a plan that we originally drew, the space that was already designed, that was presented with our plans in general, so we really didn't alter anything, the only thing is that the center is going to take a look at giving us permission to expand it into the grass area if it becomes necessary, we don't really want to do that right now, we just, we don't really want to do that right now, we want to just work within the parameters, but the fence that we're putting up is movable, so we're going to leave it that way in the event that it could be, we could expand it a little more as long as the weather holds, we're not going to do a tent, we're not going to, you know.
Right now.
Try to, yeah, right now, try to, you know, accommodate more people, we think we'll be fine as we transition, as, you know, the restrictions change.
Is that acceptable long-term, that it's not affixed to the ground?
It will be a fix.
It can be.
Yeah, this is just.
We're just doing that temporarily, if we do, if we do get permission to move it out of it, because we do, we will be serving.
What's our time window, Mike, in enforcing them to anchor it?
Well, before they open up and start serving alcohol, we would ask them to permanently affix it to the ground, if they are contemplating, and this is what I'm understanding, if you're contemplating making it bigger during the COVID-19 period, well, then we can work with you, because then it's a different set of circumstances, but.
Yeah, that was what I was going to say, I think we, we shouldn't put a, I mean, we've given a lot of flexibility to a lot of other places in town because of the existing circumstances, and.
Right.
I think we need to do that here.
Because the center wants us to expand it.
Right.
If we can, because it'll just bring more activity, and obviously more customers for us, but they want things happening.
Yes.
And if we, you know, and they just want to.
Can you speak more directly into a microphone?
They just want to wait and see what happens as well.
Yeah.
Before we make those decisions, so that's why we prefer to leave the fence, I mean, it's secure, it's not, you know, it's not going to fall over or anything, but if we, you know, if we're able to expand, we still want to be able to move that fence to whatever configuration is going to be allowed by the center.
And it's a decorative fence, it's not a temporary, you know, control type.
But there is a need to affix it, it's part of our code, so maybe 30, within 30 days after the expiration of the governor's order, it would need to be permanently affixed wherever you and the mall ownership.
Yeah.
Okay, so that would be one additional requirement.
Okay, we could add that as a condition into the resolution, that the fence be permanently affixed to the patio within 30 days after we've entered into Phase 5?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions from board?
Nope.
Okay, do, Mike, you need a motion on this also?
Yes, please, a motion directing staff to prepare a resolution authorizing the outdoor dining license, subject to the conditions outlined in your packet, with the additional condition that the fence be permanently affixed within 30 days after the state of Illinois enters into Phase 5 for reopening.
Motion is so made.
Second.
We have a motion a second, any other comments or questions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
President Byrne. Trustee Markwart.
Aye.
Trustee Brown.
Aye.
Trustee Schultz.
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
Trustee Takaoka. President Pro Tem Cook.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next item is Hawthorne School District 73, request for waiver of site development permit fees for the Hawthorne Middle School North additions located at 201 Hawthorne Parkway.
Thank you, just briefly, the board is aware of the project that's going on at Hawthorne Middle School North, I think the board is also aware that it's the regional office of education that issues the building permits, village has the authority to issue the site development permit for the purpose of enforcing SMC requirements that are part of Lake County. Connected to that site development permit is engineering and landscaping fees in the amount of $10,827, that is the fee that Hawthorne School District 73 is requesting the board to waive, we, what would remain in place is the security in the amount of $902,266. They haven't posted that as of yet, but we are working with Hawthorne 73 to hopefully have that posted in short order. Again, for tonight, then, staff is requesting, if the board thinks it's appropriate, direction from the staff to prepare a resolution authorizing that the fees in the amount of $10,827 be waived in connection with the project for Hawthorne Middle School North.
Okay, would you like to introduce yourself to us?
Yes, I would, I'm Leanne Taylor, I'm the new assistant superintendent for business and operations in the school district, I'm really excited, I just took the seat on July 1st, and it has been a whirlwind, I will be honest with you, so catching up on emails over the last couple of weeks, and partnering with the village here, and of course, the park district, and I'm going to meet some folks from there tomorrow, realizing how integrated, and how important it is to all work together, so I'd, you know, I was approached to ask to write a letter, to ask for those fees to be waived, so we've taken care of that, he mentioned the performance bond, we have chosen the way of a line of credit, so we've been working with our bank to do that, I checked in with them today on that, and we should hopefully have that all set up within the next week or so, so I've been working on it the last couple of weeks, but only been on the job July 1st, since July 1st, and been a little busy trying to figure out what we're doing with school, so, really looking forward to working with all of you, our superintendent, Dr. Hannigan, has said great things about our park district and our village and the school partnerships, and I'm really looking forward to it, so.
Welcome to the Hawthorne community.
Yeah, I'm really excited, so.
I'll make the motion to waive the fees, though, contingent upon the issuance of that performance bond.
Better credit.
In God we trust, all others pay cash, so.
Exactly, exactly, great, thank you.
Sir, is there a second?
Second.
Second, okay, motion a second, any other comments or questions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Brown.
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
Trustee Schultz.
Aye.
Trustee Markwart.
Aye.
President Pro Tem Cook.
Aye.
President Byrne. Trustee Takaoka.
Motion carries, okay, and again, welcome, glad to have you. Okay, next item is GrayStar, presentation of concept plans for a proposed residential area restricted community, residential age-restricted community located at 555 Lakeview Parkway.
Thank you, and for, I think as the board is aware, at that address is located the former AMC Movie Theater, it's been vacant for a number of years, this project would also include another vacant parcel to the southwest, it's actually still owned by Curasota's, the vacant parcel to the south, the total size of each of the parcels would be 10.1 acres, this new development that would be called Everly Vernon Hills, again, is senior age-restricted luxury apartments, you'd need to be 55 years of age or older to be able to live there, the project is comprised of 186 residences, 170 of them will be apartments in a four-story building, and then there'd be 16 one-story duplex cottages, the proposed parking ratio is 1.47 spaces per unit, as our zoning code requires 2.3 spaces per unit, as part of technical review, staff is going to need to take a deep dive into a parking study that was performed, we need to understand better the number of cars that people of this age use in a typical household, to assure that we have proper parking counts as part of the development, so we'll have to take a good, close look at that, I would also note that because this property is located in the Continental Executive Park planned unit development, that an amendment to that PUD would be required to allow this residential use within that PUD, GrayStar has approached and received a letter of endorsement from the Continental Executive Park Board of Directors consenting to the amendment, so for tonight, again, this is just concept presentation, so if the board, or, I'm sorry, if the cow determines that it's appropriate, then this matter should be directed to technical review, and then on to the Planning and Zoning Commission to open a public hearing, so with that, I will turn it over to the GrayStar Development Team, who will give you their concept presentation.
So, good evening, it is, I'm Steve Elrod, and it is wonderful to be back here in Vernon Hills, I appreciate seeing all of you on the board, and I'm so sorry, Trustee Brown, that you won't be experiencing this proposal the entire way, but we wish you.
We'll come back when it's announced.
There you go.
Long time from now.
We have been working with your awesome staff, and they are amazing, through the early stages of this project, and putting it together, the team from GrayStar is here, Mike Atkinson summarized everything that I was about right to it, and introduced you to GrayStar Development, Yale Dykman, who is the managing director, and Christine Cobb, who is the senior director, and Clayton Corl, who is our analyst, all three located spatially distant in your audience, Yale and Christine are going to come up and give you an overview both of what age-restricted developments are, because it's unique, it's new, it's certainly new in Vernon Hills, and then tell you a little bit about GrayStar and the specific site plan, we do have a PowerPoint, the first one up there is not necessary for you all, you know where the site is, and we're going to go right into the overview of GrayStar, so Yale and Christine.
Good evening, everyone, and Mike, thanks for the kind summary introduction, it's good to be back in front of you all again, we were at, I think, lunch in February, or maybe early March, just a week or so before the shutdown, so we didn't know that this would actually, this day would come, so we're very grateful to be here, I am Yale Dykman, as Steve mentioned, managing director of the GrayStar Development Office here in Chicago, thank you all for giving us some time tonight to introduce this wonderful project, and we certainly hope that it's the first of what will be many conversations about this exciting redevelopment, a little bit about GrayStar, for those of you who don't know, we are a Charleston, South Carolina-based, national and now global investor-owner-operator in multifamily housing, so multifamily being conventional apartments, age-restricted 55-plus apartments, as well as student housing, so we have about 19 billion right now in total developments around the planet, most of that is here in the United States, but we are getting active more and more overseas by the day, I joined the office here in Chicago, or should I say, joined the company, just about a little over a year and a half ago to build out our development footprint here in the Chicagoland area and throughout the upper Midwest, so with Christine and Clayton Corl there in the back, we've been very busy trying to expand that footprint, and are very excited to have what will hopefully be our third development asset here in the greater Chicago area, the other two being out west in Lombard, where we have both an active adult 55-plus deal, as well as a conventional apartment community, the, so, you know, Steve touched on what is, you know, 55-plus age-restricted multi-housing, essentially, it's apartment living for, you know, tailored specifically to residents aged 55 and older, now, I could tell you in our experience so far to date, as you see here on the slide, we've got about 40 of these communities operating nationwide, our average age is indeed much higher than 55, which is wonderful to see, that we've got residents averaging more in the low, you know, low to mid 60s on average, of course, overall ranges from 55 up to 90, so this has proven to be a very good hypothesis for us, for those who want to downsize, a lot of empty nesters that are already in the municipalities in which we're developing, we do import, of course, anybody who's willing to come from other areas, but more often than not, we study these municipalities and the demographics in those areas to laser focus on what sites make sense, both, you know, financially, but also what is of appeal in the surrounding area, and why someone who's a 60-ish-year-old empty nester would want to stay in the community, and maybe downsize from a single-family home into this community, so we're very, very excited to be finally here, we've been pursuing this site for nearly two years, we were the losing bidder about 18 months ago to another developer who had a different plan, a non-residential plan, so it was wonderful to have this one come around full circle in about October of last year with AMC Theaters, and to have the opportunity to kind of rebid and re-engage with them, and here we are, you know, eight months after that even, a little delayed by COVID, but nonetheless grateful to be here, and I'm happy to turn it over to Christine Cobb in our office, who can walk you through the project more specifically.
Hi, good evening.
Can you speak as clearly to the end of the mics as possible? No, they don't.
Well, that's, we'll leave that up to them.
Yeah, that's their.
Hi, good evening, I'm nice, very nice to see everybody tonight, we're very excited to be here, as Yale mentioned, and we're very excited about this project, which one advanced this time? Okay, so I wanted to talk just a little bit about the site, its current configuration, as well as the site proposal that we have put before Mike and his team to study for this active adult project, as everybody knows, this is sort of the southwest corner of Milwaukee and Town Line Road, right behind the Hawthorne Hills Square Shopping Center, and immediately west of On the Border, which is still open, and Jason Staley, which recently went dark, so it is over a 10-acre parcel of land, and. And when you space back out to the cover picture, which you can just back up to, you can really see what a phenomenally unique infill opportunity this is when you look at the amount of retail and business and commercial uses that surround the site. This is sort of a ripe opportunity for infill development and that's very much our bailiwick. As Yale mentioned, our active adult team has been interested in this site since 2018, preceding the date when Yale opened the Chicago office here for GrayStar. They said this is the best site in the country for active adult because of the demographics, the statistics that we look at in terms of ratios of homeownership value and rent check that we want to be able to offer to potential residents and the amount of amenities nearby that our residents can patron. So we're, we're very excited. The current zoning is planned development for the overall business park and we do have the letter from Continental Executive Park that endorses this as a unique exception to use within the business park. So the site plan that we have assembled in some constraints that we inherit with the site and its configuration. So some of those are, you know, we have a loading dock to our north that serves the Hawthorne Hills Square Shopping Center. We have detention ponds both to our west and south. And then the arc along Lakeview Parkway is really a 50-foot running jogging path and setback. So we, we tried to design the site in a way that was very sensitive to view corridors and lower height, lower density uses around the perimeter of the site. We put a structured parking garage on the far north end to serve as a buffer to the shopping center loading area to our north and try to eliminate any windows that would face north over that shopping center from the residential units. And then really oriented the 170-unit RAP building to maximize green space and maximize view corridors and try to provide as much open space as possible. And we were able to provide more than 76% open space with this design, which is really exciting when we're looking at an infill site that was sort of as, as built up with a parking lot as it was. So we're pretty, pretty happy with what we've been able to preliminarily lay out and we look forward to working with the team here on the staff through technical review if we're able to allow, if we're allowed to move forward to that process to make sure that we're providing the site that they need to see as well. The, yeah, that's kind of it for this one, actually. Actually, let me touch one more item on programming. So we have, we do have about 40 assets of this ilk around the country and we've learned a lot in the development over the last seven years or so of those initial products. What residents like to see, what communities like to see. All of that informs our unit mix, all of that informs our programming within the amenity space that we provide, as well as the programming that we do, very white glove, high-touch service to the residents. So, you know, there's probably five nights a week, there's gonna be a program onsite where we'll have a concierge type of service that arranges something that could be as, you know, varied as learning about, you know, European travel to wine tastings, to yoga and Pilates. There's a lot of different offerings that we have curated for this product nationally and found to be very successful. So in addition to the 170 units in the RAP building and the 16 duplex single-story cottages, we do have about a 10,000-square-foot amenity space to serve those residents, including a concealed courtyard with a pool in which will be resort-style kind of pool deck amenities. We have also, per the concept review request, taken a stab at some preliminary elevations for what we envision the look and feel of the center to be. This is a view that's just the main building where the port of cachere is on the main center of the RAP. And in kind of arriving at this materiality and looking at the different building, building material and then colors and context, you know, we looked at the business park more generally to understand the materials and volumes and sort of architecture design that was present there. We also looked at some recently approved or recently developed projects within the village. And then lastly, we kind of thought how we can apply those items to a residential context. So what we've arrived at in terms of a design intent is sort of a contemporary architecture take that really looks at a richness of materiality and colors that's informed from that contemporary design. So we have a selection of brick, glass, and wood appearing materials, flat roof design consistent with contemporary design as well as the majority of, around the business park. And really looking at materials that are gonna provide clean lines and be very durable and then still anchoring the corners of the building with something that provides a little bit of presence, which you can't really, I'm hoping that you're, you can see this a little bit more clearly than it's projecting. It's a, it's a wood appearing product. Okay, great. We do have some contact slides that we can show other visuals of this type of design later on, but we wanted to make sure to kind of get through this portion of the presentation. Similarly, we wanted to understand how we could apply those same materials in different volumes to the cottages. This is an example of the diversity of colors and sort of expressions that we can, that we can demonstrate. But we're not, we're not totally sold on how they're applied here. So we're still kind of working with our architect. We're very early on and we look forward to working with the village staff to make sure that we accomplish something that's unique and exciting and really beautiful.
Just one comment on those two that we've gotten is we wouldn't necessarily pair two different colors in the same set of duplexes like this. This is limited to be kind of one palette and the option palette A, palette B. You may see some variation, but it would probably be a pair of the dark and a pair of the light or something like that as opposed to a side-by-side. So in case you're looking at those going, huh?
And that's all that we prepared for the main presentation. We look forward to taking your questions and we do have additional material if that helps.
Microphone?
Where is the garage and where is like the front of the house, how we saw in the other slide?
So the, the front, the garage faces, will face the building. Yeah, so if you go, if you click back to the, yeah, so the left, the garage, that's what faces the main building. So to the road, Lakeview Parkway, you would see the right image. So back patios, which is why they're, you know, they're designed not to look like back doors. Now, again, I'll caveat all this by saying, this is probably a little bit more expensive than we'll be able to deliver in the end. This is, you know, that kind of storefront glass has a rear facade, rear entry into the, into these duplexes. Probably gonna be more expensive than we can afford in the end. We'll do something probably more traditional, more traditional windows as well. But it gives you a feel for kind of the color palettes and the, as Christine mentioned, the flat roof lines, the clean contemporary look. And that is indeed what you would see from Lakeview Parkway as you come up the hill.
Going back one slide, one concern I had in looking at this, and I know it's 186 units. No, could you go back to the, yeah, that one? The two southerly buildings, I'm bothered by the fact that it's forcing people to drive through a residential neighborhood for the only access to a couple of commercial pieces of property. And it, and it's only those two southerly buildings that are bothering me. If there's a way that those could be moved up and maybe the, the access more circuitous around behind them. Or actually, personally, I'd like to see you just lose the two southerly buildings and maybe use that area for park or something, an open space. Because I'd like to, I'd like people driving there to see that these commercial buildings, you're not driving through a neighborhood to get to it. And I, because I can't, I was trying to think of anywhere else in town that you actually, other than the golf course, you know, drive through a neighborhood to get to a, a commercial piece of property, you know? I mean, you're forced to. There's no other way to get to.
Better location for the dog park there as, as opposed to in somebody's backyard.
Yeah. That, that's one of my concerns. Other comments from the, the board?
The, the one thing I'd like to see you do is partner with the landowner. I believe it's a single landowner of the Jason's Deli and the OTB. I believe they're owned by a real estate trust or whatever. They have approved plans and I believe some level of engineering, whether it's fully approved and shovel-ready, quasi-shovel-ready, whatever, to put in a write-in, write-out between those two commercial properties. That would give you another point of access and a access directly to Milwaukee Avenue. Again, for your purposes, it'd only be southbound only, but still, it's another opportunity to engage with the remainder of the community there. And again, the engineering's been done, so it's just the, the earthwork and the underground and whatever, and then the top. So together, it might be beneficial for both of you from a marketing standpoint for you and for a marketability standpoint for him, for the closed Jason's Deli. Because that probably wouldn't be a bad thing if you could reopen that as some type of restaurant or whatever. You got a built-in market here, so I think somebody would want to give it a shot. Other than that, I, I was.
Well, my, anybody else? Otherwise, I have one other concern.
I'm looking at apartmenters, square footage, and then the cottages. What does this say?
The square footages of the cottages are about 15,077 square feet. Everything.
Yeah, I was gonna say 15,000, that's.
Well, same, 15,75. And that's per unit in the duplex. And everything is still kind of going through the design process right now, but that's what our current underwriting reflects.
What are you looking at, two bedrooms and three bedrooms?
All the cottages are two-bedroom.
Okay, and the apartments?
The apartments are a mix of one and two bedrooms. They have a nice range in unit sizes. Right now, the average unit size is 929 square feet. And that's across the entire product. So we, we have a nice range with graded pricing affixed to it so that you can have an entry unit that's below a certain purchase price and we're trying to keep residences within the RAP building for manageable chunk rent.
Is this apartments or condos?
These are all apartments. These are all rental, luxury rental.
I also had a concern that I believe you're underparked. I, I know you have your, Dallas said that observed demand was .88 per unit. I don't know how people in Dallas get around. But suburban Chicago, if you've got two people over 55 living in a place, they're gonna have two cars. Most, every, everybody that I know of that lives here in town and I'm, you know, I'm a member of AARP, they all drive their own cars. So it's.
A long-term life member.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And so I just think you're, you're underparked. And that, again, could be one of the things eliminating the, the two southern homes could be a place for some, some guest parking, additional guest parking or whatever.
That's, we'll definitely take that into consideration. We do plan to hire a parking engineer that we would use to substantiate what we've seen across the country here and understand what our conclusions are, because there are a handful of active adult projects.
Well, don't tell me what you've seen across the country. The only one I'm concerned about is, I'll believe you when you tell me something about Yorktown-Lombard.
Yes.
But not Dallas, Texas. I, you know.
Well, I think the more, most important thing was, as Mike was giving the little overview, if you were listening carefully to what he said, he said that as staff gets into this, we will be looking very, very closely at parking. Mike understands our, our concern and yes, he will be looking very, very, very closely at parking.
And believe me, the concerns are based on, several of us have been up here a few years and, and it's based on a number of items that have been built in town and, and we have yet to find anything built in town that can get away with that low of a parking rate. Otherwise, actually, the, the main building is, looks very nice. You know, and, and I think this is a, a housing segment that this community could use. Does anybody else have any other questions or concerns? Staff, Mike, did you want to include anything or?
No, I think the board touched upon really the major points with the project, especially relative to parking. So from staff's perspective, we're just looking for direction on whether or not the board wishes to send us to technical review.
And based on the concerns, I mean, at least I'll speak for this chair. I, I don't see any reason that we can't find a, a way to get past some of the concerns because this is a, you know, I think a potentially outstanding product.
It's now time for the Verillo speech?
Yes.
Yeah, that's right.
Certainly. We will ask for a motion to direct the, the petitioner to proceed with technical review. But this is only concept review. As you know, this is not a final approval. It's also not a guarantee that you will get a final approval in the future. We certainly hope you do. You'll work with, your, your, your staff will work with the building commissioner and the village staff to bring your plans to a high level through the technical review process. Ultimately, you'll appear before the Planning and Zoning Commission for a public hearing on a special use for a PUD, as well as for approval of your site plan, landscape plan, and architectural elevations. From there, based on the recommendation, you'll come back to the COW, the committee, the whole, this body, who will then make a recommendation to the village board, who will then vote to approve or, or vote on your ordinance for special use and as well as your other, other plans. So there's some, some work left, obviously. It could take a couple of months, but staff is ready to, to jump right in.
So this time, Mike, you're looking for?
A motion directing this matter to the technical review process.
So made.
Second.
Motion is second. Did you want to say?
No, I, I, we understand your process and appreciate it. Thank you, Jim.
Sure, sure.
And we, we hope you will send us, we will work on the comments that we heard tonight. We get how it works and thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, any, if there are no other comments or questions, then a roll call, please?
Trustee Markwart.
Aye.
Trustee Takaoka. Trustee Schultz.
Aye.
Trustee Brown.
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
President Pro Tem Cook.
Aye.
President Byrne.
Okay, motion carries. Nothing else on the agenda? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the committee, the whole.
So made.
Second.
I was hoping Trustee Brown would make that motion. Would you withdraw your motion?
I, the, the first withdraws the motion.
So I need a motion to adjourn?
Motion, so made.
Okay.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. We are adjourned.
Good night and good luck.